Avatar Meher Baba Ki Jay.
Avatar Meher Baba Ki Jay. Thank you Vijay. We're so excited about this. That sounded perfect and it gives me chills, just gives me chills. So we're recording now and people will be joining. I see Meher Chand is here.
Yeah, Meher Chand is there.
And Meher and Rosalie.
Meher, Rosalie and Prakash. Yeah, all admirer of gazelles and music and yeah. So I think in the beginning I would like to give some introduction about gazelles. We talk and maybe you can share what you like to say. And maybe question answer or something like that.
Sure.
I can, I can sing a gazelle and explain the meaning. And yeah Baba liked some gazelles. And even he gave realization to Sima, he liked so much. So, uh, so it will be interesting that I explain that gazelle and sing it and explain it word by word. Hi Dinah, Jai Baba. Yeah.
You know Vijay, I have some questions before you even start.
Yeah.
You want to do that? So I, I am really ignorant about this stuff. I don't know anything about it except I love it and it gives me chills. But I don't know the difference between a bhajan and a gazelle.
Gazelle is basically Urdu shari. And in Urdu and it is the way of singing. Like gazelle and tumri, Begam Akhtar used to sing tumri. And then kawali, there were various kawals. So kawali is more powerful. Gazelle is kind of soft and with pain and with heart. And kawali is like very forceful. And see now your means by asking, I think I like this way when you ask question, you provoke me to speak, otherwise at my own.
Yeah.
It will be so maybe Prakashji, Beharchan, they can ask questions. And that way I can be explaining and that will be easier for me. Yeah.
Very good.
And I, I will sing one gazelle and then explain the meaning. When Baba's like Sima's gazelle is, I feel very important to begin with. And so one word by word I will explain it.
Okay.
And yeah.
And what is a huma gazelle? I don't even know that or a huma, huma.
Well, that's the name given to, initially when Baba was in the disciple and guru, like guru was Upasni Maharaj. And he, he did not, that realization, that power. See, all those five perfect masters give him the knowledge and power and all. So Upasni Maharaj was the main, very important knowledge, all knowledge. And so during when Meher Baba, somewhere in nineteen fourteen, I mean see when Hazrat Baba Jan kisses him, gives that divine touch and he becomes unconscious. And for eight months breaking that, then Upasni Maharaj gives the knowledge. He hits at the same spot. And so, and then after that, that stage means for four, five years. As a huma, he used to write poetry by the name Huma.
Oh, so it was like his pen name?
Yeah, it's a pen name, Huma.
Now I understand, okay. So there are a whole series of those?
Oh yeah, they are really amazing. Means I think, see the, this culture of singing, music. Like yesterday we were discussing about God speaks, this feeling and emotions. The field of feelings and emotions. So that what, this is a ishka hakiki. Is a real love, not iskamizaji. The worldly love is like ishka mizazi, the human love. And it has like, you know, means it, it needs some object or something. But and satisfaction of cravings and desires and whatnot. The unadulterated love, but the divine love is the pure ishka hakiki. And so, and here that he wants to unite. The lover wants to unite with the beloved. And that separation and then intense agony of separation. And then desire to get union with the beloved. And so that is the real means.
Well, you know Vijay, Prakash put in the chat a definition of gazelle. So Prakash, do you want to read that because they won't see the chat in, in the film, in the video? You want to read that for us, Prakash?
I can read that but see this is definitely straight from the web. I mean I have no clue really, but anyway the gazelle according to what I got was a lyrical poem with a fixed number of verses and a repeated rhyme. Typically on the theme of love and normally set to music, that's what it says. So it's a poem that apparently is set to music and the theme is love.
Hey Prakash.
Yeah.
I also heard the definition of gazelle below it, you can read also that.
Oh, you have, right. You want to read it yourself? I mean it's up to you.
You read it, you read it, Prakash.
Okay. What is the meaning of gazelle and why answer to follow request? Okay, how much of one bitcoin? Oh, there is something about bitcoin here.
Yeah, start where it says answer at April seventeenth.
Answered April seventeenth.
El has also just joined, hello El.
Hi El.
Yeah.
Exact definition, you start from exact definition.
Yeah, if, if you want me to read, let me. The exact definition of gazelle is to talk to the beloved ones. It may be understood as a poetic expression of both the pain of loss or separation and the beauty of love in spite of, in spite of that pain. It was originated in Iran and it is one of the most, one of the most artistic form of Arabic, Turkish, Persian and Urdu literature. Initially, the gazelle was written in the context of problems and solution of those problems based by women in the society. But after several centuries, audience took interest in love affairs and the whole mushaira. Mushaira is like Vijayji mentioned.
Audience?
Is poetry. I mean, I don't know how to say it. I mean what form of, what form it is. But mushaira, as far as I know is poetry, was gradually shifted from entire, entire women community to only one form of women that is beloved ones and hence there and ends. So but yeah, it is definitely as the original definition also said, it's a lyrical, lyrical poem that's set to music. And the theme is always love, which also obviously is separation.
Okay, thank you.
The more, yeah, the most important aspect of the gazelle is, of course, during the time of Meher Baba, I think he has really recognized and he has brought it up. Because I see the best gazelle singers and kawals, they were all in fifties and sixties and seventies. And like in India, the gazelle, famous gazelle singers are Jajid Singh, Chitra, Pankajuddha and there are so many names. In Pakistan originally they are the singer who means Sabri brothers, kawali, kawali, very powerful kawali.
Right.
And then Mahdi Hassan is the king of the gazelles, Gulavali. And so these were all the names. And they sing with such a feeling and emotion and the beauty of their poetry. And mostly it is on wine and sharab, kushna and sharab, wine, alcohol, bar and all these. Because that is the place where they get intoxicated. But that's of course not the divine, intoxication is something different. But even the people like that kind of refuge. And for their inner relief, they just, because in, in India and at this, they come home and meet with the family, that's the refuge. But the country, western country where there no family, lonely person, he gets refused in bars and like then of course, and there to pass the time. Because then everyone gets drunk and then they, their heart speaks. Whatever they feel inside, there is no hypocrisy and they just word come out of the heart. So their heart says and of course, this Sima's gazelle, if you go through any, one must know all the meaning, entire meaning. Maybe Prakashji can put in the chat box that gazelle and the exact meaning. I can explain it word by word. And that's amazing. And then you can know key, why, why not I want to be here, the person he should be given a word? Because see the heart and love, these are the subjects where nobody discussed in public. These are considered the love affairs and considered very private. And means on mostly attributed to the woman. And so, but then Baba really has shown us that divine love. And so when you see the Sima's gazelle. Ab kya batau main teri milne se kya mila? Irfaane gam hua mujhe dil ka pata mila. Yeah, so what can I say? What did I achieve when I met you? I got the knowledge of pain. Actually this knowledge is a mystical knowledge. So irfaane gam hua, irfaane gam is a mystical knowledge. That of kind of pain which is felt in separation only. So that kind of, so definitely Sima deserves he could. And then he says ki, he got the address of the heart. He, he knew where the heart is, otherwise nobody know where the heart is, what is heart? And only the biological heart. So the, and the divine theme also, if we read God speaks, that if we go beyond intellect, means see reading and of course. But after reading that domain of feeling and emotions and intuition and illumination and realization, so definitely these are the field of emotions and feelings. Like this music, then art, drawing. And these are the areas where means artistic things, the heart is, they put their heart. So definitely the music and gazelles and all definitely will, it opens that faculty of heart. Takes you above the intellect and feelings. And then, and you get, it is intoxication. Means it is not the, something like alcoholic intoxication that when the wine is finished, you return home, intoxication is finished. But it is a permanent kind of intoxication. You get absorbed and the music like, yeah, means I am aware in the eleven hundred century. The avhang, they used to sing avhang, oh my god. They're so, they are like also, of course they are in Mahendi Marathi. Means I, I saw this avhang by saira. Ki haribhajanas bina vedagalu nakore. Don't waste your time without singing his bhajans of the Lord and amazing. So and always they absorbed in the bhakti, singing the praise of the God. And of course, Rumi also in the twelfth century. And that's the Sufi tradition. Mostly the, in the Islam, they have this Sharia laws and all. But the beautiful thing of Sufism, they means brought out this ishka hakiki. They talk about the ishka hakiki and that's why Baba seemed to like Rumi and Hafiz, amazing. And if you see the life of Hafiz also, he began with love. Means he, he fell in love with a girl, very beautiful girl. And Hafiz, Hafiz because the name was given to him because he had Quran all by heart. So that's why the name was Hafiz. And he was ugly looking man and the girl was so beautiful that he just fell in. But see his determination, he wanted to achieve the girl. And so he thought and he thought so tough. But being an ugly person, it was never, never that was possible. So he said, he wanted to make it possible and he went for this pennants, forty days pennants. They call it, what's the name of Prakashji, that forty days pennants they do, the Muslims?
Shilanashiri?
Shilanashiri, right. Baba's father also did the same thing. And so, but then while doing, of course, his determination and he was the purest soul and I'm sure the perfect master was there to guide him in worldly. So when he sees the, the Gabriel appeared, the angel appeared and asked him what. But then when he sees the beauty of the angel, he forgets the beauty of the girl. And he say, he immediately that thought comes that if the god, angel is so beautiful, then how, what about the beauty of God? So he says I want God. And then he was granted and then it took him forty years. Then he had a master and after forty years he got God's realization. And so that's the beauty of means gazelles and these tumri. Baba liked Begam Akhtar. And Begam Akhtar, you know, she's saying initially, Begam Akhtar.
Yeah, who's that? Oh, the master, okay.
Begam Akhtar, Akhtar Begam, Akhtar is by the.
A woman, a woman.
Ah.
Yeah, woman name.
Yeah.
A famous gazelle singer. And initially when Baba, Baba called her to sing, she demanded money. And Baba said no. But then later on, see that work is started and later on she herself came to Baba and she fell into his feet. And then she dedicated her life. And so their, their style, her style was totally different so from gazelles. Like if you heard the song. That means the, eh, love and the result of the love. I cried to see the result of the love.
So, so you, if anybody has any questions, go ahead and raise your hand.
Vijay. Basically, the gazelle is represents between beloved and lover. For the separation, due to separation, it will be singing with your, for the separation pain or the reunion of the, this thing in a, in a love between the beloved. Beloved you can say it here, beloved means we can stay gone. And a seeker is the lover, we can say so also. That's the reason most of the Baba gazelles is between the God and seeker, aspirant, we can say that so. Shreem Meher Baba.
Yeah, so actually it could be perfect master and it could be God himself. Like for us, Meher Baba is there and he's there. But in one gazelle, Meher Baba explained that perfect master between the seeker, he gives him a God realization or no God realization, in no intermediate planes and like that. So actually the beauty is Meher Baba used to start those gazelles in between. And then he used to explain the meaning of the gazelle and then. One seeker, one was singing, a young boy, like fourteen, fifteen. And he was so intense because kawali is so intense. And Baba said, don't touch him, you will get a shock. So they, they get hall also, they are means temporary hall they get while singing. And it's so intense singing. I remember going to kawali with my father at Javelpur, whole night. We were there enjoying and didn't feel like moving out and morning five o'clock, we are coming back home. So that is the beauty of kawali and wherever means I had so many chances of joining and I was really a fan. So they are so intense and full of those guys, if you see them singing kawali, my god. Yeah, so intense and beauty.
Are there videos of them or?
Oh yeah, you find this like, yeah.
And in fact, you can find the gazelle program during Abharchiti. Right from eleven to nine, morning two o'clock on thirty, thirty first, every in Abharchiti. And you can find if you go to Ajmir Chisti, you find Darbari, Darbar and Thas. Because Vijay is from Nagpur, he knows in Thas, Darbar also, there will, every time they will be singing this kawalis and gazelles. Yeah.
So meanwhile.
Yeah, anybody else have any questions before you want?
Yeah, yeah.
Vijayji, one question.
Yeah.
In what way avhang is different from gazelles, tumris and the other names you mentioned?
I think I better sing then I can, you will understand because the style. So that I can, uh huh, yeah. So I can sing this twelve hundred century, first I will sing this. Ab kya batau main teri milne se kya mila?
You want me to share the screen? You want me to share the meaning or?
No, I will, no, I will just, and yeah, you can share it definitely. But now I sing and I can.
No, you explain it will be better, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Kama. Kamrat jab mila hume. Gaumay ash na mila. Ab kya batau main tere? Milne se kya mila? Irfaan gamh huwa mujhe. Dil ka pata mila. So, the meaning is, irfaan gaum is a mystical pain and so he says, what shall I tell, what I got after meeting you? I felt a mystical pain and got the address of my heart. I got the aim and ambition and purpose of my life. I got everything I needed after I got your map, the way to God, nakshah, naksha. So, I, once I came to know that you will be achieved in this way and I was quite happy. So, content, huh. Why those seekers of God are desireless? The seekers of God are desireless and when I cross the boundaries of self, I got khuda. Khudi khuda, khudi it means self, khuda means God. Then he says at the last, don't be surprised. Never seen Simab so surprised that what I got, myself was missing. He was shocked to see Simab that his self was missing, yeah.
And that was good news, right?
Yeah, shocked, self was here, he was all over.
So Vijay.
Definitely, yeah.
I'm sorry, I have to go to a doctor's appointment, so Prakash is gonna take over the tech role, okay? So, thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you and thank you for your questions, so it gives me opportunity to talk.
Hey, Vijay.
I'm funny.
Vijay.
Yeah.
Vijay.
Yeah, please.
Vijay, I've put the definition of abhang and the difference between kaval and ghazal also in the chart box.
Okay, but if that I sing in practicality, then I think people will understand that.
Yeah, okay, but I'm telling for basic fundamentalist, abhang is then a devotional song, praise of the god. And normally, it's a song given to the vitoba, that's what it was written in Marathi version.
Uh, yeah, vitoba is Lord Krishna because those abhangs are eleven, since eleven hundred century. So, after that, they would have attributed either to the perfect master, Lord Krishna and, uh, yeah. So, I, I sing this, uh.
I think best abhang singer is Pandit Bhimsan Joshi.
Okay, uh, can you, uh, can you tell me which is the good abhang, means there are abhang like, you like, which abhang you like?
Mahadev Pandari. Bhimsan Joshi is an abhang.
That's a great.
Mahadev Pandari, that's.
Okay, so, uh, anyway, I sing this, uh, abhang by, uh, Saira. Hari Bhajana seventy-two, yeah. Uh, this abhang is, the meaning is Hari Bhajana, bina kaal ghale bu na kore. Don't waste your time without Hari Bhajana and don't afraid. Till Jiva gets united with Shiva, don't put off the inner light of the candle of heart. Speak such words that everyone appreciates your knowledge. Don't cook unnecessary things in your mind. Have company of the lovers of God always and bring proper knowledge amongst the lovers of God. Without proper experience, don't shake your head, that's interesting. Then Sohira says, the divine knowledge, talk day and night without blinging, yeah. Hari Bhajana bina kaal ghale bu na kore. Hari Bhajana bina kaal ghale bu na kore. Duri cha safa bhivuni bhava. Bheti nahin jiva shiva. Antari cha jnana diva. Antari cha jnana diva. Malbu na kore. Malbu na kore. Hari Bhajana bina kaal ghale bu na kore. Viveka chit tharil hole. Aise bolave hole. Viveka chit tharil hole. Aise bolave hole. Apulya mad ugi chich kal. Apulya mad ugi chich kal. Ghale bu na kore. Ghale bu na kore. Hari Bhajana bina kaal ghale bu na kore. Hari Bhajana bina kaal. Sant sange tini umaj. Anuni mane purit samaja. Anubhava bina mana. Hala bu na kore. Hari Bhajana bina kaal ghale bu na kore. Sohiram ne jnana jyoti. Teth ke chidivas rati. Taya vina netrapati. Taya vina netrapati. Ghale bu na kore. Hari Bhajana bina kaal ghale bu na kore. Jay Baba, yeah. And.
Beautiful, that was.
Yeah.
You have meaning for that?
Uh, yeah, I just.
Oh, you said, I think you shared, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, you did, you did, thank you.
It's, it's short, I can say again, don't waste your time without involving in singing bhajans, Hari Bhajan, always sing. And don't afraid. And till, keep it on, till Jiva gets united with Shiva.
So, this is by Tukaram, this is by Tukaram?
This is by Saira, Sant Saira.
Oh, I see.
Sohira, Sant Sohira, eleven hundred cent.
Okay.
Tulsi Dasji means, Tukaram is after that, I think.
Okay.
And so these are among, in Maharashtra, these abhangs are sun and it's a very common culture in Maharashtra. Uh, so Sant Tukarli Maraj, basically he used to sing bhajan and he visited Neha Baba in Panaapur. Uh, in the meeting in nineteen forty-three and then, uh, yeah, and he told my father to contact him. During his visit to Jawalpur, yeah, so.
So Baba told, Baba told your father to contact him?
Yeah, I, yeah, to meet him and so my father used to go to him, yeah, discuss. Bhajans and.
So what is the next one you're gonna share?
Uh, yeah, you, you tell me what means, if you ask questions, it will be easier for me. I can tell so many things.
Why don't you, why don't you share, if you can, Begamakthar ghazal, that one, uh, the one you mentioned earlier? Uh, the famous ghazal. If you, if you want to, I mean, if you have something on the list, please go ahead with that.
I think maybe, e- actually, uh, today I talked to Latalima. The Latalima was the girl who at the age of fourteen, uh, she, Baba asked actually at Parazha to ca- call a singer, good singer. So Rustam Kaka, he got caught hold of this Latalima, she was fourteen then. Must been sixty-six, sixty-seven sometime. And so then, uh, when he brought that girl to, shown to Mandali, Mandali where a, where as well, what this girl will sing in front of Baba, Rustam Kaka, where he got this girl? And how she is going to entertain Baba, they were all worried. But then when she sang before Baba, uh, then Baba was really happy. Deva ru tuje roop kithi goda, goda. Oh, Lord, your, uh, your form is so beautiful, kithi so sweet, yeah. So, and Baba liked it and so everyone was happy. So then later on, Baba, I asked her to go to, actually he told Begamakthar alone, so. So Begamakthar to teach her, give her some training of ghazals. And, uh, she said that she sat in the lap of Begamakthar and she learned. And then she, later on, she got the presidential award also in singing, ghazal singing. And Baba really, it's given in the, Lord Behar, the entire story. Maybe some ten, twelve pages are there, uh, to her. So I talked to her.
Vijay.
Yeah, hi, yeah.
I was gonna ask you, finish what you were saying, then I wanna ask you something.
Okay, okay, so then she said, I, I requested her, next week you please come, Thursday. So maybe she can come and we can enjoy her ghazalis and.
Oh, Thursday, bhajan, bhajan's time she's gonna sing now, okay.
No, no, this, this time, I think we will be having this program next Thursday also.
Oh, I think so, yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, Angela knows, I, I didn't check the calendar, but that's fine, yeah.
So next Thurs, I told her next Thursday and the timing we can set up always. And so we will have chance to listen, I don't know if she's able to sing or not, but at least her presence will benefit us all and we can talk to her and, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Go ahead, Al.
Yeah.
I, I was gonna ask you Vijay. I don't imagine, but do some of these ghazals that you and other Baba lovers sing, do they add Baba's name to it or rewrite it a little bit to make it seem like it's for Baba? Or no?
Uh, well, uh, see, uh, this, if it's just a coincidence that Nehavan and Behavan and which they use this word lot of in the ghazals and poetry. So coincidentally also this, you know, see, when Avatar comes, it's all preparation. If you see the history of Begin the Begin, it just appeared there, he was and then it was seen that it was made for him only, means the divine theme. So, uh, many ghazals are like that and, uh, these are attributed to the divine love. And of course then later on, halfish, like halfish ghazal. Tamam umr tera intzaar hamne kiya. Is intzaar main, kis, kisse pyaar hamne kiya? Halfish ghazal. Tamam.
Oh, thank you.
Umr tera intzaar hamne.
Yeah, I'm down to my last one percent, so if it dies on me, I'll say goodbye beforehand and just stay on till it dies. And maybe I'll see you tonight or the next time you give the concert.
Who? I didn't get you, uh.
Plug it in.
Please.
I'm saying my iPad only, my iPad only has one percent left, so it's gonna die on me pretty soon. So when, when you don't see me anymore, you know it's gone.
Yeah.
But I'll see.
We are, we are, we are discussing ghazal and by heart, so very deep meaning, anyway. So.
Is Madhulima is in states or in Pune now?
Who?
Madhu, madhu, that ghazal finger, Madhulima.
No, she's.
Latalima, sorry, Lata, Latalima.
Latalima, she is in Pune, actually she wants to go to California, but now the.
Cause she, last time when she came to the concert, she came from states only.
No, no.
Yeah.
She was.
And she sang that, hey, Mohabbat before Baba also, in one of the gatherings, I think sixty-two or sixty-five. Hey, Mohabbat, that's, yeah.
Nah, that is not, I don't know sixty-two, uh.
Because for the fiftieth anniversary, for the fiftieth anniversary of Golden Jubilee anniversary also, she sang, she came and sang before this. I think sixty-five, sixty-two, fiftieth Golden Jubilee anniversary.
Uh, yeah, of course the Begamakthar is, I think somewhere in, during that period only, so because she, she said that she sat in the lap of Begamakthar.
Yeah. But she sang before the Baba and again on the fiftieth anniversary, she came and sang the same, same song before in, in the open auditorium at the, of the hill.
Yeah, that was just three, four years back, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that.
Sixty-five, sixty-five, I think the fiftieth anniversary of sixty-five hours.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, she was there, sure.
Yeah.
Trust has invited her especially to sing that bhajan, that famous song Rajaji, she sings.
Hmm, Rajaji also.
So, looks like I, I actually thought it was half an hour, but I think looks like almost one hour.
No, but I have, I have a question, I mean, I was asking, I was wondering about the song. You know, you just hummed it in between, intzaar hamne kiya.
Yeah, that was, uh, halfish.
Oh, can you sing that? That's a beautiful one.
Yeah, actually, music.
If you're prepared, don't worry about it, I mean, otherwise, uh, we can always listen to you later, but if you are prepared.
Yeah, I can sing it next time.
Okay.
Uh, so, yeah, and I think it's a closing time now, so I think any questions, we can, Rosalie, Rosalie is so interested in ghazals. She didn't ask me any questions, so I was, yeah. Rosalie? Yeah, and.
Rosalie is having her lunch, lunchtime.
Okay, okay, okay. And Vettie just appeared and we just almost finished Vettie here. Pardon me?
She's there, Rosalie's there.
I say I'm smacking on ghazals. The truth.
Vijay, I have a question, I'd like to know how you, you seem to know so many and so many by heart. And I'm wondering how you came to learn them? You know, whether through other people or through getting it and reading it and learning it? Um, how did that come to be that you know so many others?
Very good. Uh, uh, yeah, actually, basically, my father, who is, uh, was a poetry writer, in nineteen fifty-four, Uh, uh, yeah, actually, basically, my father, who is, uh, was a poetry writer, in nineteen fifty-four. He wrote Mahar Prakash Bhajnavali, one Bhajnavali, Adiji asked him to, uh, send eight hundred copies. So he printed some thousand copies, and eight hundred copies he sent to trust, Adi Ke Rani, and two hundred kept with him. So that inspired me, and then he wanted, so he, hello? So he put in the music school, right from the beginning, when I was six years, seven years, classical music. And I had also, uh, by, by nature, music was in my nature. Maybe the blessing of my father and Baba's blessing, of course, and whatever. So I picked up and I learned classical music, uh, for a couple of years. But even I was not very regular, I was kind of abstaining, uh, from the classes. And my teacher who used to tell me, you should be serious, one day he told me. Uh, but I learned so much, and then I was interested in those Bollywood songs, those movie songs. And, uh, and I used to sing those songs, I used to play flute also and tabla, all this. And then my father used to take me to the kavalis and gazals, so I had lot of interest in kavalis. Because they are so attractive, so, and so absorbing. So, uh, that way I could learn, and then later on, it's slowly, slow process. And gradually, then center, when we used to go to center, they asked me to sing bhaja and gazal. So that way gradually I improved, and my associate means, uh, uh, singing those movie songs. Help me lot now, because those madhusudan tunes, they are connected with those all songs, light songs. So that way I'm able to sing, catch those tunes, and, uh. I am able to sing those songs. And now I can, means gazal, I like to sing, so I can put them in my tune also, my way also singing. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, uh, somebody asked famous, famous gazal singer, Jagjit Singh. Uh, what is, uh, good music, good song? He says he, thus, uh, song either is a good or bad, which you like is a good song, which you don't like is a. But nothing like bad, see, not so good. So it is, it's a field.
Vijay, Vijay, who, who composed Apaginake?
Ah, Firak Gurakpuri.
Who?
Firak, F-I-R-A-K, and Gurakpuri, the, uh, that name, pen name, Firak Gurakpuri.
And then, uh, you know Humkumitasa Ke?
Uh.
By Jigar, by Jigar?
Yeah, Jigar Muralwadi also, Jigar, yeah, yeah, he was also famous.
I mean, you know that one, Humkumitasa Ke?
Uh, but I can look into it, and I, actually, I, Bal Nathu gave me some around hundred gazals.
I mean, and some of the, some of these are maybe popular singers, like this one, Khudapaneko. Mumtash Rashid is indeed popular, like. Not, not all.
Basically, those Pakistani singers, and they are really Mehdi Hassan, and now Parvind Surtana, and. Gulamali, and, and now some new gazal singers are also there. And in India, Jagjit Singh was the king of gazal, uh, he, his voice was really amazing, Jagjit Singh.
Yeah, well, see, John, John Connor must have favored those ones, cause these are the ones I le- I learned, you know? And, uh, you know this one, Khudapaneko? I was late.
Yeah, if you tell me the couple lines, I can always.
Khudapane. Khudapane. Khudapane ko dhunda tha. Maine teje chacha. Maine teje chacha.
Wow, wow, very beautiful. Khudapane ko dhunda tha, maine.
Yeah.
I loved you, and that was the, my own search for the self. Loving you is the search too, for my own self, real self. Amazing. See, there's such a beauty, means what a feeling, and Baba said, when it is said with the feelings. And when you get really absorbed in it, so that's a real way of singing.
I ha- I have to say, I was leaving India, and I got to the airport, and they said, five hundred rupees. Your, your luggage is overweight, and I, I just started singing Khudapaneko. And they, they let me through, they didn't charge me rupees.
Oh, God, you're amazing.
They, they appreciated that I learned a song.
Oh.
And it's a beautiful song.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Rosalie, I have seen you first time in L A, and I know you since nineteen eighties, and since then, means. You are really special, and that day, yesterday, I think you told that Mehra. You upset Mehra, so that was also really something to me, and, uh, that's really, uh, amazing, yeah.
I don't, you know, I really don't think I upset her, she was just giving me a gift. I, I, you know, really, because I knew everyone on that porch, it could have been them. Cause that book was passing, that book was passing, they, they passed all the time, you know? So that was just my moment of grace, is all I could say, you know?
Oh, yeah, that was actually a blessing, what I mean to say.
It was, she spoke to me so, my name so deliberately, it couldn't have been, you know, it was. Rosalie, you know, it was, I have to say, it was strong, but it was certainly loving, it was certainly loving, and. And, uh, but it, I gave, it gave me tremendous pain, because I, I still think she glanced my, the pain of my childhood. Anything that, the pain that was still there, she glanced it, yeah.
You got the, you got the address of your heart, Dilka Patan.
Oh, yeah.
She proved your heart, she touched your heart, and then that was a blessing in disguise.
I mean, Mehra, I have to say Mehra, because she was so much Baba, that I didn't feel, uh. A personality, like, I didn't feel personality from her, I felt Baba from her. I, you know, it was most remarkable, because as, as beautiful as Mani and Erich were, I still could feel some personality. Not with Mehra, no person of, no. That was my, that was my feeling, you know, so I, I could not. Choose anything else if I could be with her, you know, so it's like, you know?
Yeah. So, Betty.
I'm just asking you, I'm sorry I was late, and I, I hope that you will do this again. You know, sometimes it takes a while for people to know that, it's have, it's slow at first things, and then they catch up. And I was, tell me what, what your intention is here to? Are you singing together, or learn, teach us what the, what the gazals mean, what, what are you thinking?
See, I, I, uh, frankly telling, I don't have any intention, but I was asked by Angela. To, uh, study gazals, teach melody, and word by word. And because, see, Baba liked gazals, and, uh, those gazals, and what I personally feel. That West is mostly intellectual, they are reading goddess speaks and flame reading. But this gazal field, uh, is a, uh, field of emotions and feelings. So this should be also, because after intellect comes the intuition, the emotions and feelings, and then intuition. And then illumination, and then realization, so it's a way of world. So it to provoke your feelings, means from intellect one should go, they must study these gazal, they should sing gazal. I, I really so happy that Rosalie is get so interested, and she.
Yeah.
John Connor, John Connor.
You know, really, no, it was, you fall in love, because Adi Ke Rani, I never, until this tape of him. Heard him sing, because he already had heart trouble, they didn't let him sing anymore, and I thought, oh, no. Because he would say a line from those gazals with such feeling, it was like he was singing. And that, that, I caught fire on that, I caught fire, and then John kept coming to the. And I remember him singing Apaginake, and I went up to him, and I said, what was that, what was that? And he, he gave me a whole little book of all the gazals he sings. Yeah, and it's like, and I know, like, at Archie, when you sing a gazal, I mean. People are, they're tuning in, because they like, you know, that's what happened to me. I tuned in, and all of a sudden I was singing, I was singing them, you know?
So Vijay, another, it's an intellectual question, but what's the difference between a gazal and a bhajan?
Well, see, it's the, you see, it's their cultural background. Gazal is basically a Urdu and Muslim background, Sufi culture, basically.
Yeah, Iran, it's Iran oriented, it's a Sufi culture, means Iran orientation, and kaval is mostly Urdu terms. There is a difference between a kaval and a gazal, gazal terms mostly Persian, Parsi terms, Sufi, Sufi is the. And kaval is accompanied by music and harmonium and tabla, whereas gazals may not be but modern culture. They mixed up the gazals and kaval also.
What about bhajan? What's, what's bhajan?
Bhajan is in the praise of a lord, this, this maybe gazal means, it is between beloved and lover. It may be taken as a god or lover, or a, yeah, aspirant and seeker and a god. Or it may be due to a, a woman loving, fall with a love with a boy, like Laila Majnu. They like that also, for the gazal, but bhajan is always, bhajan and kirtan is always praise for the lord.
They're all, they're all praise for the lord, what else are they, they're all praise for the lord.
All for praise of lord, but this is mostly gazals they sing with for the separation, or search of a god. Or for a, what is it, for a pain, or loss, or something, they, they sing for the gazals. In bhajan and kirtan, only praise of god.
Vijay, what do you sing mostly?
I sing both, earlier I used to sing bhajans, and it's a recitation remembering god by singing bhajans. And bhajans have like abhang, or classical, or lighter music, or there are different ragas. Where depending on the moods, you have different moods, and but gazals are kind of a Sufi culture. And, uh, is a, yeah, and they have such a style of singing, there is a gazal, there is a thumri. Uh, like, um, uh, this, uh, Begamakthar is to sing thumris, he was a master in a thumri. Then tarana are there, then, so like that, and gazal also, it is not that you have to. It is a, a, it is certain style, each gazal singer has their own style, it is their own trap, means. Like if I sing gazal, I will, I will sing the same gazal, but I can sing my own style, it's my feeling. So I, when I put my feeling in that, see, because I'm singing, you just coughing the tune, and that is. Not, you won't enjoy that, of course, that can be sad, but actual singing is, yeah.
Vijay, uh, you, you sing Mahola Be Maza. Because you sang it at Archie, can you sing that for us?
Yeah, uh, but, see, Prakashji is getting restless, it's time for me to sing Mahola Be.
No, 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 I'm not restless at all, we, we have all the time, it's your patience, I mean, if you have to go to bed, then.
That's a nice, that would be nice to hear a song.
But we're all, we're all restless for Baba.
Okay, okay, so then I can sing Mahola Be Maza. Mahola be maza hai tere pyaar ke bager. Mahola be maza hai tere pyaar ke bager. Kaise piye sharaab koi yaar ke bager? Mahola be maza hai tere pyaar ke bager. Yeh ishq bhi hai kitna anokha muamla? Yeh ishq bhi hai kitna anokha muamla? Yeh ishq bhi hai kitna anokha muamla? Ikraar ke bager na in tere ke bager? Kaise piye sharaab koi yaar ke bager? Mahola be maza. Fursat mile to puch kah bhi unka hal bhi. Fursat mile to puch kah bhi unka hal bhi. Fursat mile to puch kah bhi unka hal bhi. Jo log jee rahe hai tere pyaar ke bager? Kaise piye sharaab koi yaar ke bager? Mahola be maza hai tere pyaar ke bager? Uh, everything is, uh, useless without your love, means that entire, uh. E- environment, atmosphere is useless without your love. Uh, how do I drink wine without a company of a sweet friend? Yeah, and he says, he, this ishq is, is, this, love is a strange affair. Sometimes yes, sometimes no. Love is a strange affair, sometime yes, sometime no, refusal, sometime acceptance. It says, I like the last ex- asja, if you get the spare time. Please pay your attention to those who are living without your love, please, please. Pay attention to those who doesn't have your love. Yeah, so whenever if you have spare time, the poet is telling him the lord, yeah.
Vijayji, who wrote this?
Isn't it by Zafar?
He was actually king, last Muslim king, yeah, who lost everything in wine and.
Oh, Baudhusha Zafar.
Yeah.
Oh God, he was, yeah. And wonderful, you sang with such heart, I mean, it was just, just, we were lost actually.
Maybe we can that story next time about the king lost everything or.
That's the story all the time. That's it. Uh whether, whether, so uh that was a ghazal, right?
Yeah.
I always thought the the koali was more like, you know, more of a beat, yeah, this is like. So, so, you know, beautiful. Yeah, painful but a love song, yeah, yeah. Wounded but loving.
Yeah, yeah.
It would be nice when we can all be like Rosalie, we'll sing with you.
Believe, believe me, you catch it, you catch it, ah, definitely, I didn't, I didn't plan it. Yeah.
So Lemon, Lemon Mummy should now learn Urdu and Persian words to understand.
One song at a time, one song at a time, we learn, yeah, that would be.
First you, first we should understand the meaning, without learning the meaning, there is very difficulty to understand ghazal. Even I don't know anything about the meanings of the ghazals, I sing but take, because some too many Persian words are there. And Urdu words are there, so it's very difficult. Uh in at least kawali, you have lot of Urdu words. It's somewhat little familiar to Hyderabad people, Urdu words, you, but Persian and Arabic words and Urdu words in ghazal is very difficult. Now, modern trends of the ghazals are becoming like a, what called light music songs like that. Because they can't go to this, for kaval you should have throw, lot of throw. And with the full deal and with happiness, you have to sing kaval. It's a kaval usually not done by a group, group singers. One man takes the lift, another man, he starts, it's like that.
And Baakachuri liked it also, he liked, every time he would talk when he come to the west. John was there with this harmonium and he, he had all these people that had caught it, had caught it. Yeah, yeah, it's so beautiful and some, sometimes, sometimes a line will come up, just a line. And I remember Baal saying, you kinda, you kinda tap into that. That plane where the music is so beautiful, because that's just how it is, you know. There's, there's, I mean, that, that existence of the yearning of the lover and the beloved is, is happening all the time. It's happening all the time, you catch it with these ghazals, you can catch it, yeah. And that's what Baal was saying to us. And I believe it because one time we, he let us sing for two hours. Different, you know, on and on and at the end of the two hours, everyone got up without thinking and was dancing. Dancing. And Baal, Baal, I couldn't believe it, he was, he was bouncing. He was like, like he was on springs. I, I mean, he was going pretty high and I thought, well, he's usually under the weather, you know, has to wash his health. He wasn't washing his health, he was like, oh, you know, and I was, I was at Jacko, Jacko's health, Jacko Corocco, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I used to sing ghazal for Bawa in the hospital when he was there here in Pune.
Ah, yeah.
That's wonder, oh. Oh, that must have been wonderful. Are you coming back next week?
Actually, I, I asked Latali May, see who sang before Bawa and got the presidential award. And disciple of Vegam, actually not disciple exactly, Vegam Akhtar taught her some thumri. And she got the presidential award on that. So she is coming, I, I requested her, so she say she might join next Thursday. Prakashji was curious that whether it is the timings and all, whether it's the same time or.
No, I mean, I think we'll check with Angela because she is the one to set these up. So, but you are right, I mean, the time is generally going to be the same. Uh perhaps half an hour earlier than usual, but we'll see, yeah.
But you say, but you say Vijay, it's your own fault because you caught all these people. So now, 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 now you can, now you can teach them, yeah, yeah.
I, I said that I am not a teacher, but we can study together.
But let, let me ask you this, Vijayji, sorry to interrupt, please continue your thoughts, sorry, I just. No, I mean, the question I have is, do you have know classical music like you learnt?
Yeah.
To sing ghazals, I mean, uh is there any connection, I mean. You know, I mean, like sari gamapadani, I mean, those sounds and all that stuff, do you have to know all those and?
That will be very helpful, Prakashji, because say in the ghazal, like when we take murkiah. Like those artistic. Like those, those alaps, those, so they certainly bring out the feelings. And if you want to insist on some uh word, some meaning. And then you stress on that and you take a laugh like a jalwa or a ishka or a. Means those meaningful words and then uh you sing in such a uh. Artistic way insisting alaf and so this classical knowledge because I, what I have seen. All those ghazal singers, they're very strong background of classical background because they know. Ki what kind of, they change some time track also and they bring to another raga. So they are very powerful in the image background of the classical music.
You should know Hindustani.
Uh yeah, actually earlier means this Paluskar. Jo had, he made it easy, but earlier those gharama system was there. Because those Sufi gharamas and all, so it was their own property. It was not available for the general public, but then for the Vishnaran, Paluskar, Bhatkhande. He rationalize it and he brought to the common public and then music. Maybe it's from two, three hundred years ago, two hundred years.
Thank you. Gar, gar, gharamas are very difficult. There are different type of gharamas like agra gharama, then uh different tal gharama. Most of the time, they, 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 allah per its sake, itself take for around about two to three minutes.
Yeah, yeah, oh.
And sometimes when people will think whether he's singing as he's just making something by. One of our judge who was very good at agra gharama, when he takes, he's standing to stand, I didn't understand whether he's crying or he's singing.
So, uh if I may interrupt, Marsha has a suggestion, I mean, if you have time, Vijayji. Uh she was thinking of Istiyaki.
I have.
Can I say something? I, I wrote in the chat that maybe like if we just pick that song and we got like the. The pronunciation to sing along, we could sing it maybe two, three times and then you could translate. And then you could proceed with what you wanna sing or request, you know, so you focus on learning one, at least one bars, one at a time, you know.
That's a good idea.
I used to be a teacher, so I have, have to stick my nose in, but anyway. This way we'll be able to share everything but have one song that we really know what it means to sing, you know, instead of just singing it, yeah.
I think that's perfect, perfect suggestion. And Istiyaki because it's a dictated by Bawa and Prakashji, you have, can you put in the chat?
What's that, the meaning?
Uh yeah, I know, meaning of, yeah, if you want other, of course, I, I'm going to explain it really.
May I make a suggestion? If you know what you're gonna do for next week, you could put it like in a, like an email like Jeff does, you know, with. With the pronunciation and then we can just have it in front of us or on the screen so we could sing, you know, I don't know.
It's a good way to announce it on the calendar too, say we will, you know, focus on.
Yeah, that's of course, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
And of course, right, actually what I would like to do, invite other ghazal singers also, like for next week, I. Uh requested Latali May, who sang before Bawa. So something like make program more interesting so people can gather, of course now there I see six people. Uh sorry, nine.
Nine.
Gita, Gita ji has joined just, so and Cassandra was there in the beginning. And of course, it was too lengthy a program, means it started nine fifteen almost and now it's ten, so anyway.
I think an hour is good myself, an hour is good, yeah.
And I, I, yeah, I don't want to go means uh, uh, means formal way, just be informal and. Means everybody can discuss and so that way people feel more relaxed and I also feel relaxed, yeah.
So I put the song itself in the chat, so try to see.
Oh, you just did, yeah. Oh my goodness.
So how do you save that? How do you save the chat so you can look at it later?
I save it, I don't know if you have stickies, I save it on, I copy.
You just copy it, copy it and put it on your notepad or wherever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ke shok jab had se siwa ho jaega. When divine love crosses its limit or peak, then he will be appearing in front of your eyes. Aankho means eyes and jalvanuma means he will be visible. So uh then it says. What shall I say, my heart? When you lose self, you become what? You will be qualified from, uh yeah, you, you deserve that, you're only, that's your right. So and you from slave to you become god. He came and whispered in to my ears. Uh that uh the wise thing means the, means the thing which was not known to anyone. Unknown thing, he told in whispered in my ear that when I will be yours, when you become wine. So that's the meaning.
I think this is a great song like she suggested, Marsha.
Oh, yeah.
Uh to start it off because it's not too big, too short, just about right and it has a beautiful melody, so it just flows.
And I, I am sure every Bava lovers should learn this and sing, at least.
We just focus on one song at a time for a couple of weeks till we learn it, so we don't have twenty thousand songs, just one at a time and then you do your program. We like to do, you know, because that's what we love to do.
Ah yeah, I would like to say, Marsha, uh music is, there is a difference between music and reading. Means like a book reading or, everyone has a different candidate, means patrata. It means their ability to grasp and sing music. One can learn in a one, one hour and one cannot learn even a saaregama pasura for months, months. So uh so that way, I, I don't think everybody will be on the same level. Uh but you try your own way, I can just tell once and.
Okay.
Yeah, because to know the exact sur means it's so difficult. I will say you learn at home saaregama pa, all the thing, so.
Well, whatever you do, it's great, we appreciate whatever, however you wanna put it, you know, it's just the Vijay movie show.
Vijay, Vijay, in fact, if my suggestion to all the Western Bava lovers is. There are two CDs available on, one in the voice of Katie, another is the voice of Rhoda. Rhoda sings for Baba about the Istiyaki, Istiyaki. You, before that, you just take the words, listen to the DVD and learn it. And then you can follow with Vijay, that's one of the alternate positions I can make to you all. That is Uma two and other is Rhoda sings for Baba.
You know, it's, I just, it's almost like, you know, if I sing an English song. I have my own typical Indian accent and the culture in there. So music and culture are so interlaced, I mean, sort of, so, so that's what I think Vijay is trying to hint. So.
Well, that, that.
In fact, Rainy, Rainy learnt a lot of classical music from Ristum Kaka and others in. In, in, in Ahmed Neger, yeah, she's music.
And I, I, I really surprised is that how John Connor means his accent and even there is a French guy at Paharabad.
John, John, John.
Yeah, amazing.
He, he was, he always used to, he always used to run up along with Meher Sudhir and Meher Tej and Gopi. And he learned, even things sings really Tilgu songs also.
Oh, amazing. All languages, Vikum Marathi, he sings such a means right pronunciation.
Yeah, even Edarnatal used to sing Baba's, Mehra Baba, Kutiwala, very nice.
Well, there, you know, it's, these languages for me are like. Pollination languages, they're full of vowels, it's very beautiful. And it never, I've never felt intimidated by those languages, I'm more intimidated by English. You know, it's more intimidating, they're, they're vowels, it's, it's really of the heart. Vowels, vowels, yeah, and I, and when I learned the Burj Awaanar. I wasn't worried about mispronouncing it. And I, and when I learned the Bhusha Wainar, I wasn't worried about mispronouncing it, I wasn't. And I'm still not, you know, I might not have pristine a pronunciation, but that is not required, it's not required, you know. To sing universally is something else. You use more of the heart and then you're not afraid of committing a cultural error, you know.
Well, that's why it's good to be able to mute when you sing, so nobody hears you.
Yeah, all right, but I, I sang Ishtiyake in front of Korsia. Now, Korsia used to sing it as a child to Baba. And Korsia said to me, you were singing correctly, but she says, don't move your head. It's a sacred song, don't call attention to yourself. So she told me the best thing possible, you know, it's just totally devotional. So I heard it from her, I didn't need to hear it from someone else, she knew, she knew. And she was not fastidious, you know, she was singing like a child to Baba from the beginning, very beautiful.
Excuse me.
Yeah, Vijayji.
Yeah.
Still not asleep. We, we have all the time, we leave it to you, you can close it anytime you suggest.
No, I'm ready, I'm ready to, but if you have any question, last question, welcome.
Just thank you, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, welcome. Thank you.
So maybe Vijayji, let's do this next time, we'll pick on this particular song, this particular one. And then, like she said, we'll practice three or four times. And, and then you sing once, so the recording will be there. So then everybody can practice at home on their own and then, you know, that kind of thing.
So Prakash ji, you please email me that program for the next and you can add that Latali May program also.
Right, 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 yeah. I, I'll get in touch with Angela, Angela knows when to schedule this. And but, so you're sure that she's going to be here next Thursday, right?
That what today she confirmed to me.
Okay, so I, we'll let you know the exact timing so she can join along. And then I think you have the link and everything with you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any chance to start it a bit later? I have Tai Chi on Thursdays, central time from till twelve, till eleven, twelve thirty. So that's, you know, so I won't be, I might not be able to participate.
Marsha, Marsha, the only problem would be it will get late for them. And then I think she's also quite old, right, eighty something? Yeah, so, yeah, that's the only difficulty, but we'll work it out, we'll see how it can be changed around.
Yeah, okay.
Meanwhile, Vijayji, if you want to talk to her and find out if she feels starting a bit later than today would be okay for her.
She said that nine thirty is also little late, so I say well you.
Oh, okay.
Nine thirty, nine thirty would be.
No, nine thirty Indian time, Indian time. So, yeah, so we have to add two and a half hours to it to get to our time. So that would be two and a half hours, will be twelve o'clock noon time. So nine thirty would be late, right, you said?
Far, she said, yeah, it is late, but.
Eight thirty is good, eight thirty your time, I'm sorry, nine your time, how about nine?
My time.
It will be convenient for her.
Okay, so then it will eleven thirty here, Marsha, is that okay for you, eleven thirty?
Ah, eleven thirty by you, so that's ten thirty by me. My class starts at eleven thirty central and it's just once a week on Thursday, but it's like Tai Chi, it's really cool. So I can try to do both, but I won't be able to partici, I mean, I can record the session, so you do what's good for everybody. And I can like jump in and out, you know, because, yeah, I can figure. But I, I like to participate in person rather than recording, but, you know, everything's on Thursday, right?
There's an alternative suggestion from me is, the first class, if you slip also, the second and third you can enter. Because only to accommodate Lalita, Lalita Limai, it will start the next week, a little early. And next time, as per your convenience, Vijay can.
Yeah.
Vijay is the, our own family member, he can accommodate you whatever time you want.
Yeah, no.
No.
Let me say this, let's work with Angela and then she'll do what is right and then we'll take it from there, right? I mean, we definitely will inform Angela about your difficulty, Marsha. And but again, keeping Lalita ji in mind, who is quite old, so we want to work out a best solution.
Sure, yeah, I'll go with it, yeah.
Thanks, everybody. I mean, Vijayji above all, thanks to Baba, thanks to Vijayji for sharing all those beautiful things today. And we'll take it. It's been really.
I, I can accommodate myself to whatever is good for Vijay and everyone else, I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out, Baba will figure it out. But anyway, thank you very much.